Good evening. It is now seven o'clock and I will call this session of the Act in Town meeting to order. Welcome to a special town meeting called tonight by Citizen Petition. First of all, I'd like to ask, first of all, my name is Joanne Berry. This is my first full town meeting as your moderator. Most of you have seen me, thank you.[32.61][32.61](APPLAUSE). Most of you have seen me before, I think, at other town meetings, but are there any folks here tonight who, this is your first town meeting? None? Okay, all old hands. All righty. So, before we get started, I do want to call your attention to, there are three surveys going on around. You might have seen this handout that has Town Meeting Improvements, West Acton Library, and Housing in Acton. So, this gives you a QR code that you can go ahead and go right to the survey on your phone. It's also got a link to the online version, and the town meeting survey actually is available on paper if you would like to do it that way. There's a box right down here you can drop it in, and one out by the exit when you leave and hand in your clicker. If you were so inclined to do the survey that way, you could just hand it in out there. So, as you well know, this is the legislative body of town government. It's the voters' opportunity to participate directly in one branch of the government with the power to make or amend bylaws and to appropriate funds. It is your opportunity to speak directly as a legislator. So, it is my goal as moderator for tonight's meeting and for all meetings that I would serve to make efficient and respectful use of town meeting members' time. To that end, please be mindful of time limits. As indicated on the clock, there's, I think there's one visible to you out there, and there's clocks visible to us in here. So, if you are speaking from the floor as a town meeting member, you will have two minutes. Just so that you know, you may, I think you probably all know this, but you may make your point and ask questions during that time, but if you've done one of those things, you may not call the question. You can only do that on its own if you wish to move the previous question. And that, of course, is used when a member is recognized. Once I recognize you and you feel that debate has gone on long enough, you can say, "I moved the previous question." Would require a second and is not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If there are questions of fact, I will recognize the appropriate person to answer the question, but then no discussion of the pros and cons of that will follow. So, before we get started, I'd like to have everyone know who's up here. So, if Ms. Gardner could introduce the folks on this side.
To my immediate right is Dean Chata, and to his right is David Martin. To my immediate left is John Benson, and to his left is Peter Berry. And behind me is Eva, the town clerk, Nina, the town council, and John, the town manager.
Thank you. And over on this side, Mr. Borden, could you introduce the Finance Committee?
Sure will. At my left is Christine Russell, our clerk, Sahana Baroit, Mike Majors, Kristi Anderson, vice chair, Al Vladineck, Tom Farley at the end, and behind us is Jason Cole.
All righty. So, tonight, we're here to discuss one article, which is a non-binding resolution. It was sent to every household in Acton in the warrant that provides adequate warning to voters regarding what will be discussed. So, that is what we will discuss, is what is in this article, which I will read the motion in a moment. So, the warrant, the article was submitted by Citizen Petition. Once that happens, 250 people or more sign a petition saying they would like to have a town meeting to discuss this thing. Once it has been submitted, the selectmen have 45 days to call a special town meeting. That 45th day was December 8th, so today's date, December 3rd, does fall within that requirement. So, anything about the actual pros and cons of sewer expansion will be discussed next week on December 10th. Tonight, we are only discussing the article at hand. All right, I think we have taken care of that. So, we will, I will read the motion to put it in play. The petitioner will have seven minutes to make her case. The town will respond with seven minutes. The Finance Committee will give their recommendation, and then it will be open to you, the members, to speak. If you could identify yourself and your address when you first speak, that would be great.
Madam Moderator, I have a question.
Yes.
So, in prior years, I've been the con or opposition presentation, and after I give my presentation, the pro people, which have been the town, have had a chance to rebut. So, I was hoping that I would have, in fairness, the same opportunity.
We will have a pro and a con, and we'll move to discussion. All righty. The article, I think we could have the article on the screen so that people can see it. Ms. Friedrichs moves that the town prepare comprehensive build-out and traffic analyses which detail existing conditions, likely and worst-case scenarios under build-out with sewers and without sewers before the town holds any vote to expand sewers to West Acton. Such analyses should consider the possibility of 100% residential development under zoning and maximum density under Chapter 40B. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Friedrichs, you have seven minutes.
Thank you. So, my slides, I have slides. I don't want the clock to start until my slides are up. Is it possible?
Your time has started.
I don't get my slides?
I think your slides are there.
I don't see any slides. Let me go a second so I go forward. Oh, there we go. Okay, so, first of all, this petition asks for if you want the town to quantify how sewers could impact the amount of housing in West Acton. This is not intended to talk about whether you support low-income housing, whether you like it or you don't. This is only about how many, and whether or not you want that information before you vote. So, I asked the town whether or not they could do this build-out analysis. I've been asking for months, actually, probably years. And finally, they sent me the West Acton build-out analysis, which was from 1924, excuse me, 1994. It's not quite that old. And I noticed that it said that in the Village Residential District that 375 additional units were possible under Village Residential. And that's probably about half of the sewer route, the district. And so, I was very concerned, and I thought, gosh, you know, what could happen? And so, I started looking at the rest of this document, and it started talking about the commercial space that was available. Over 300,000 additional space was available. And so, I started thinking, golly, shouldn't we know how many housing units that we want to have? So, I apologize if this is an inconvenience and a cost to the town, but really, if we had addressed this earlier this year, we wouldn't be here. I believe a lot of this could have just been done with a memo from town staff in-house. I do want to say that I believe that housing is a basic, fundamental right, and that if this was about very low-income housing, I wouldn't be here. I would have taken the risk, but it doesn't. So, let me first state that the financial impact of the schools is also not a consideration tonight. This is about whether we want, whether we want to study on how much housing would be, would happen, and how soon. So, the town says that not much will happen if the sewers come, but yet the Acton Community Housing Corporation's housing production plan declares that lack of sewers in the district is a main barrier to housing development. So, what happens with sewers? When sewers came to South Acton, many commercial parcels converted to residential. Since the public in sewers were installed, most of the 40B projects have been located along the sewer route, yet the sewer route is a very small part, less than 1% of the land mass. As an example, the town had, in the Finance Committee presentation, had talked about Prospect Street and how a big parcel down on Prospect Street was, you know, not developed. But that's on a high priority conservation list. Nothing in West Acton has that protection. So, we looked at the things that did happen, and with just a few projects on Prospect Street, it doubled the number of housing units. On Prospect Street in 184, just as an example, four huge trees disappeared. The developer apologized, he ran the bulldozers into them conveniently since they were in the middle of the driveway that was being planned. But nonetheless, this is what happens. And then, on Kelly's Corner, another small house got turned into huge townhouses. And this is one that's just recently approved from the junior high school. Whether you're in favor of this or not, 30 units per acre on less than an acre. And so, I just wanted you to understand that that's what we're talking about. So, in terms of quantity, is it sufficient to just say that these hundreds of units are possible, or do we think that we want to understand what is probable in terms of the unaffordability of the betterments sparking people selling out to condo developers? So, we're talking about like hundreds of units are possible in West Acton. To just give you a specific, this is just a reference point that shows you, the blue line is the, I don't know if you can see this. I guess I can't, I don't have my pointer, but the blue line around here is the sewer area, and the red area is the West Acton Village zoning. And so, this is where the study looked at. So, now, I looked at specifically in the village because I think that the businesses are at special risk relative to the amount of the betterment. And so, I looked at the number of acres that I thought were vulnerable, in particular South Auto down on the left side. A good part of that is flood zone, part of it is wetlands, but they're building 40Bs in flood zones in places in Cambridge and Somerville. So, I added that all up, and I said, okay. So, just looking at that, like eight to 10 acres, according to my math, at 30 units an acre, 240 to 300 units. But that's not all. If we go back to the 1994 analysis, Village Residential zoning, where their own analysis claims that 374 more units in Village Residential is possible, where at least half of that would be on the sewer route, so conservatively, 390 to 450 units. But let's say I'm wrong, and it's only 200 units, or only 50 units. If each of those units loses in tax-percentage terms, then that's $350,000 loss per year. But yet, what if it was 100 or 200 units? And it was $3.5 million a year. That's a lot of teachers. But it's not just the housing development. It's the likelihood we lose small businesses in West Acton and suffer yet another reduction in our commercial tax base. Do you want to know if I'm right before you vote on sewers? We have professionals telling us it won't happen, but those same professionals told us it wouldn't happen in South Acton. And when it did, they told us, oh, well, the market shifted. Do we want to risk this to the same folks again? I do not. I hope you vote for better planning and to be more informed before we vote on the sewers. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you okay? Mr. Martin.
Hello. Thank you for coming out tonight.
One more. Can we have the timer at seven, please?
Thank you for coming out tonight. A little bit wet, cold, and slippery night. I'm David Martin from the Board of Selectmen. I'm here tonight to present a counterpoint to what Ms. Friedrichs just presented. The Board of Selectmen, first of all, voted unanimously not to recommend this article, mainly because the things in this article are really unnecessary. And I'm going to be talking about all these topics over the next couple of minutes. The town has conducted build-out and traffic analysis studies before, and I'll talk about those. The town has zoning and other measures to be used, you know, as needed. And I'll talk a little bit about those. Usually, when we have a, when we need a study as to build-out or planning and things like that, we constitute a volunteer committee. We can't really, in town meeting, very easily choose the parameters on which we conduct a study. And that's why we put together a town meeting to make those decisions, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Finally, this article is too vague to actually conduct a study. What it asks for is not something you could hand to a consultant and said, "Please give me a report on this." So, we have a study that's 25 years old. Surprisingly, not a lot has changed in West Acton in 25 years. Some of the businesses have turned over. Village Works was created, but the, and a little bit of area was added to the district. But not, overall, much of this study still applies, and you can go read it. There's a link at the bottom, and I can get you the link if someone wants to read this This study helped make the zoning that's in place now. The zoning that's in place now promotes mixed-use development. That's what we wanted at the time, and it passed overwhelmingly 25 years ago. It's Acton's most successful village. It's really the only village in town that you can walk and live and shop and do all the things in one place. In this article, it asks for a lot of things, and that, again, you can't just hand to a consultant and say, "Please study this and give me a result." It asks for 100% residential development. It's really unrealistic to expect that every business in West Acton is going to go away. I mean, that would give you, you could calculate that answer, but it really doesn't tell you anything. It asks for maximum density under 40B. How would we decide which properties a developer might turn into 40B? Maximum density would mean all the properties turn into 40Bs. And that can't happen now. The town, as of this June, we entered into safe harbor. Let me just explain a little bit about that. If a town reaches its housing production plan, so the goal is to have 10% affordable housing in a town, and we create a housing production plan every few years, and if we reach that and we get to at least 8%, the state allows us to control our own destiny. So, instead of having just a 40B that can come in and violate zoning anywhere, it needs consent from the town to be created. Those are called friendly 40Bs, or LIPs. And so, we are in that state now, as of this past June, that safe harbor state lasts until June 2021. And we're hoping to have our production plan goals reached on an ongoing basis, even after the census, which our goals will go up a bit. And therefore, developers cannot just build 40Bs anywhere. So, not only is it unrealistic to have every property turn into a 40B, that can't happen without consent of the town, and we certainly wouldn't want to do that. This article also asks for the worst-case scenario. What's the worst case? Who decides what's the worst case? And it asks for the scenario with and without sewers. That's an extremely complicated question. It may not seem like a complicated question, but it is a complicated question. In most residential development, for example, residential projects where they maybe build like eight townhouses or something like that, if they're on sewer, they can build eight townhouses. If they're not on sewer, they can build seven townhouses, and there's a little bit of land to put a leaching field from a shared septic system for all the other buildings. To decide what you could fit in each property in West Acton would require that the soils and everything be analyzed to see what size of septic system you would need. It's a really complicated question. Really, zoning should control development. And in 1994, as I mentioned, we voted to promote mixed use in West Acton. It's our most successful village. There is some residential mixed with commercial in the district. There isn't a lot of commercial, and I'll talk about that in just a bit. Large projects also require a traffic analysis, and large projects have to have parking available, right? So, you can't just build a large development, either residential or commercial, without doing the traffic analysis and providing parking. In addition, the, most of these properties are in the historic district, which adds another level of review. Sewers are rather a poor mechanism for, to control development. It tends to hit businesses more than it does residences. Sewers alleviate septic problems in the district, right? So, the septic systems in this district, often older ones discharge directly into the groundwater because of the high groundwater in West Acton.
You may ask a question later.
And Acton's wastewater treatment plant discharges much cleaner water than any septic system. Finally, I believe we want to promote the vitality of our, of the businesses in West Acton, and the businesses now are limited by their lack of sewerage. And I think there's the possibility here of unintended consequences. If the businesses can't thrive, then yes, they may turn into all residences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What is the Finance Committee's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee believes that, as a general rule, it is appropriate to bring as much information as possible to the town. Just a figure you with an item that has the potential to bring significant change to a large portion of West Acton. That being said, this proposed warrant article will be ineffective if passed. The request in the article lacks scope, lacks a source of funding, and as a non-binding resolution, requires no action on the part of the Board of Selectmen or the town. If the board did decide to move forward with the study, they could not do so prior to the upcoming town meeting next Tuesday, December 10th. Given these factors, the Finance Committee has voted to not recommend this article.
Thank you. Before we move to debate and questions, I have been notified that perhaps business owner or owners in the West Acton district may wish to speak, and maybe non-residents. All who are in favor of hearing from those folks, should they arise, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. If that does happen, if anyone is such a person, if you could identify yourselves, that would be very helpful to us. So, we have our con microphones over on my right, your left, and the pro microphones on the other side, and if you have a question, you can go to any microphone. Yes, sir, microphone two.
Sorry. There we have it. Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace. I'm concerned about the misinformation that has been spread about the potential build-out because of sewers. I've seen many examples of misinformation spread by the proponent of this article. I'll focus on just one issue. I was disturbed when I heard that a rumor was started that I was planning to redevelop my property with multiple housing units. I brought this up at a public meeting stating that there are deed and conservation restrictions on my property. The proponent then agreed that there were restrictions on the property, but I could still build on five of my acres. I only own three and a half. I guess we know where the rumors started from. A few days later, I heard that a neighbor was told by the proponent that I had plans to build high-density 40B housing when sewers are available. When I refuted that claim, the opponent stated that she had seen the plans for build-out of Wright Hill. While an appraisal report does exist showing potential build-out, it was used to value the land for purchase by the town, which the proponent is aware of. In the spring of 2013, a group of West Acton families formed the Wright Hill Association with the express purpose of purchasing this property to allow time to formulate a plan to permanently protect this hilltop open space. With the goal of permanently protecting these lands, the Town of Acton Open Space Committee proposed that the town purchase approximately 14 acres. This purchase was approved at town meeting April 2014. The property was appraised by the Forest Company. This must be the report that the proponent is referring to. The build-out report was used to value the land, but it is now obsolete because Wright Hill is protected. I bought the house and three and a half acres in August of 2014 with restrictions that would not allow a build-out. In conclusion, there are no current or future plans to develop Wright Hill, and using this misinformation of me building high-density 40B housing is not only false, but reprehensible. Please vote no on this article, and let's have a fair and truthful debate about sewers next week. Thank you.
Microphone one.
Madam Moderator, Ms. Moderator, or Mr. Moderator?
Madam Moderator.
It's what?
Madam Moderator.
Madam Moderator, thank you. Wayne Friedrichs, 24 Windsor Ave., Acton. And I've lived in West Acton for 45 years, so it pretty much is home to me, and I've raised all my kids there. We've got all these people voting. How many of you live in West Acton in the sewer district? Up here, okay, we have two of them. I would be affected. I am in the sewer district, although I'm not sure how I would hook up the way the sewer is being proposed. I'm a bit confused in that this petition is for doing a further study on traffic and potential development, and yet we're getting into a lot of areas about sewers versus septic, and I think that's next week's issue, not this week's issue. We have a 25-year-old study. You've got to be joking. Anybody that says something's still the same after 25 years, give me a break. I mean, this is ridiculous. I can't believe anybody involved would think that 25-year-old study is valid today. The opponent said that it's too vague to do a study on the development and stuff. I was a selectman for six years. I know how the system works. Everything starts out vague, but the planning board, if they want, they can make it less vague, they can make it black and white, and they know how to hire a consultant. So, to say something like that, I think is ridiculous. Probably the biggest joke that I heard is on one of the slides that said, "Not much has changed in 25 years." You know, I can tell you what's changed in 25 years, just about everything. You know, the village was about half the population as it is today, and I think that...
Your time has expired.
Pardon?
Your time has expired.
Well, can I have 10 seconds?
10.
The requests of this petition are reasonable. Please vote yes with me and the rest of the people that are in the sewer district. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Larry Canard, Betsy Ross Circle. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. The EDC supports sewers in West Acton, and I invite all of you to attend next week's special town meeting to hear our statement of support. I'm right now expressing the EDC's statement in opposition to this article. We have two reasons. This article draped in the false virtue of "let's gather more data before we decide" is really an expression of opposition to extending sewers into West Acton. It is another example of using the machinery of town meeting, in this case, a request for more studies, to place obstacles in the way of making progress on solving some of the complex problems facing the town. If people are opposed to sewers in West Acton, let them attend next week's special town meeting, argue against the sewer article, and attempt to get other members of the town to support their opposition. We should oppose this particular article on principle of a last-minute obstacle being thrown into the way of next week's article. A second argument relates not to the specific point of the article, "let's gather more data," but rather to the message between the lines. If we build sewers in West Acton, then surely more residential development will follow. That's a valid argument. I expect we'll hear this point of view put forward next week. But there is an illogical second message that is barely hidden here. If we do not build sewers, then this development will not happen. Students of history of the town will recognize that the same argument was used quite a few years ago when the town was asked to choose whether to extend sewers throughout the entire town. The appunts of sewers were successful at that time, and what happened? The various residential developers were built even without sewers. Please join us in voting no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Tricia Gilpatrick. I live out in Winter Street. I'm not in the sewer district, but I am in support of this article. I echo Mr. Friedrich's statement to say that... To say that West Acton Village hasn't changed in 25 years is -- it is kind of ridiculous. The gentleman from the FinCom Committee stated that there was a -- these were complex questions, and that is exactly why we need to study it further. I am not opposed to searing if it's necessary and if it makes sense, both fiscally and for the -- just the best of the town. But I don't feel the town has provided enough information and enough current information. I think the information is very dated. And I work in the construction industry. Studies are necessary, especially with large, complex projects. And it doesn't make sense to me fundamentally to rely on 25-year-old data. I mean, I'm not opposed to progress. I've lived in Acton for 44 years, as it turns out. My family moved here when my dad was stationed at Fort Devens, and we stayed. And this is -- it's a great town. I want what's best, but I also -- I'm mindful of what's best for everybody. And I think that before we move forward, we need to answer fundamental questions. So I ask that you support this article. Again, if it is a little vague, it can be sharpened up. It's not the intention to have everything at once. I really hope you support this article for more study. Thank you, everyone, for the time to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Hello, Moderator. My name is Don Willis. I am a non-voting local business and building owner at 245 Arlington Street in West Acton Village. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. This is obviously a very important issue for me, for my business and the investment that I made in a very small building that supports my livelihood and my family. I had a business in Boxborough where I live for the past 11 years and looked to move that business into a building in Boxborough by purchasing a piece of property there. And because it really didn't have the potential for the infrastructure to support a village-like atmosphere that you already have existing in Acton, it didn't seem to make sense to me to be able to make that investment in my small community. So I chose to make that investment in your wonderful, small village community. I am one of the smallest business owners in the smallest building, and I am well aware of what the betterment would mean to me financially. And it in no way scares me into considering selling out to a developer. I am also in the building industry and have been for 20 years. I know what it means to my property to be developed in many different ways, but the atmosphere of the village is what brought me there, and the great neighbors that we've had and some of the other people that have put money into their businesses locally is what's going to help me sustain that business and keep it looking and offering the services that I think all of the local residents and neighbors want and have been telling me they want. My business was one of the first ones on the slide that was against this because it's one of the big pros locally. It was an auto parts store, and now it has great local curb appeal that's in keeping with what I think people want to see in the village right now. So I would really appreciate it if people wanted to vote against this study because I think it's a filibuster that is trying to slow down the progress that is happening in a positive way in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Michaela Moran, 80 School Street. I'm in the South Acton Sewer District. When the sewers went into South Acton, there was a concurrent or close-to-concerned zoning bylaw that was added at that time that was supposed to encourage mixed-use development. It did not. It has decimated the number of businesses that were in South Acton. Using that as an example, I am really quite perplexed at why the town has not looked at this kind of data. This is what we need to know before we go forward with searing West Acton. You like West Acton as a village now. I love West Acton as a village now. If you sewer, you run the risk of the same thing happening that happened in South Acton. And I don't think that's what we want. So please, let's study this a little bit more before we go forward with anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Jim Snyder Grant, West Acton. When I heard about the petition, I immediately wrote to Tara and expressed my thought that this was not a good process. At the same time, I've been wondering what value there might be in having some additional study on this topic. But what I've seen so far is that we're perfectly able to have a debate, the kind of debate we're going to have next week, without this further study. It doesn't seem like information is going to be developed that's going to change people's minds one way or the other. You know, there is the possibility of additional development, residential, commercial, in West Acton, with or without sewers. The possibilities may be more with sewers. But I don't think that a -- I don't think that a study at this point is going to provide a lot of illumination, and it does seem to me to be just a part of a delay process, which is not what we need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fredericks, I will give you two minutes at the end, in case there are any other questions that come up. Speaker at microphone one.
David Hahn, 105 School Street. I don't know whether West Acton needs sewers or not, but the reason why I don't know is because no one has expressed enough vision about what West Acton wants to be. Maybe it wants to be residential, maybe it wants to be commercial, maybe it wants to be both. In what proportions, who knows? But I want -- I think the whole process is sort of backwards. I would have tried to come up or have the town come up with, "What does West Acton want to be?" And then you could determine from that whether you need a sewer system or not. So I advocate for this article, and I think you really ought to put a lot more effort into some planning before you pull the trigger on sewers. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Bob Van Meter, 2 Half Moon Hill. I move the previous question.
There is a motion on the floor to cut off debate. Is there a second?
Second.
Requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it.
Do we need to clarify? Two-thirds majority. Oh, that's right. That was close.
That actually requires a two-thirds. That was a little close. Could we just try a voice vote again in your normal tone? All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe we'll go to the electronic voting, please. So touch the orange button to turn it on. Should say town meeting, ready. We'll have 20 seconds for voting. All who are in -- so if you are in favor, press A. If you are opposed, press E. B, C, and D, don't do anything.
In favor of what?
Of cutting off debate. Oh, we should be voting. I couldn't -- I can't see the clock, sorry. Okay. It is now open. No, it isn't.
Turn it off. Start again.
Okay, voting is -- wait a second, till the clock runs down. Reset at 20, please. Voting is now open. Now it is time to vote on the motion. You may have two minutes, then we will vote. Go ahead. Turn on the mic, please.
So the reference to safe harbor for the 40Bs, the ACHA has declared, at least in meetings I've been in, that they're not going to stop at 10%, and these get approved by the Board of Selectment at a majority, which they seem to be inclined to do. The density for housing in the West Acton Village, there's a .4 floor-air ratio, 40%, and that's how much you can fill on the space. That increases to .7 when you add residential into the mix, and if it's 100% residential, is my understanding. So it's a 75% density bonus, which creates an incentive added to the cost of the betterments. I'm not going to -- relative to the personal attacks on me, I can address that later. Somebody walked up to me and asked very nicely if I would include the traffic aspect to be included in the study, but it already is in there, and yes, with the housing, it comes traffic. Just in South Acton, the -- every unit has, like, two-car garages, even though it was put there because it's near the train station. So it seems that the two cars come with every house, and so you can calculate the traffic from that, if we can actually figure out how many units. And in my view, it's probably hundreds. Thank you.
The motion is before the floor. As is noted on the screen, it does require a majority vote to pass. All who are in favor with aye, press A. All who are opposed, press E. Open the voting, please. Is it good? The motion fails. As it required a majority to pass, it did not achieve a majority. Before we adjourn, I would just like to remind folks that, as has been noted several times, we do have a meeting one week from now in the same location on December 10 to discuss three articles. There is a lot of information out there on the town website and other locations, plus you do have your warrant has been delivered already. So I would take a motion to adjourn. It has been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
All who are in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.